Do we'd like to take a break? I think we better, because I think if we don't know what we're talking about, we probably shouldn't have held today. All right, how much time do you think we might save?
Ten minutes.
All right, let's adjourn for ten minutes, make sure we're better. Thanks, folks.
Wow, I always think of the... The... Zion.
So how does the public say?
Isn't it?
So it's supposed to be on the balance sheet, and then that would be plus whatever we did.
Right. So why are they... Did she just have?
I have.
Who's making the phone?
Well, the one I count. The one I count. So, yeah. So page just fourteen.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, it's covered today, right? So you're saying... We're seeing, so this is as good as it gets, though.
From our transfer house.
Right. Good.
But if...
Yeah. None of them say they come around?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But is that true?
Yeah, this is ours.
Okay, so...
So maybe the transfer. So this is her... Good. Cover, is it because of the fund balance?
There are those all in the funds.
Can you try to figure out at least what we...
No, there's kind of... Farmers work at some day ones, use which show up on the... Which is separate from the... Some are straight under two.
Doesn't have their own...
Is that enough for your...
Can see, so yes.
I'd be honest, yeah.
We were first three states. But we try to do at least one.
They're actually using the supplementation of the fund.
Yeah. But that would...
So I'm telling you, you can give them up on them.
No, it's not. They're all separate. So I hope this is right.
But yeah, yeah.
And we have to...
Because I was giving according to the law.
Yeah. So we're gonna oversee that.
We still were planning on overseeing. Overseeing, but...
Right.
But you think fund balance...
Right.
It's just hard to establish if I want to spend it. It's too bad they could help elect a new board to oversee that federal C3. I mean, it could be you and four other people, just require us leadership, the president, vice president, treasurer, etc.
I think, who else do you have that?
It's too bad. So do you have a planning committee? So do you have a committee that's starting to reduce the rating?
It's too much.
Great. I think it's a great idea, have that be a... Because such a gradual check to that township or that day. Yeah, we're going through each part. That must be...
I think we always work with this. I think it kind of... I think that the township should support these things. And so he has worked with... Is that the request that... To take the history responsibility? For that one, I think that's really smart.
Or they don't have to be...
My... I actually started my... This is my...
It's a... So it's not like I...
That's what it is. Because remember I saw what's in it? It started in the main, and then it just kind of fizzled out, and I'm not sure.
Did you decide, did you decide on that person you're gonna most, which is usually when I'm... During the week, it's...
I know your health, but I still have a lot that I want to do. I just didn't have a... Keep getting counted on my roof, and it's like two more times, and I'll be...
The original township, you know, we could go thousands of ways.
I could. Yeah, it's ten months without a change. And what helped this? What, what one? January sixth? Oh. So that's... Is that your birthday, January sixth? A bunch of this is a gift, a bunch of this... Yeah, what's my plan?
When you were trying...
I don't know how long, what's your...
I think it's great.
Well, when I was on the board, I still...
I couldn't... No, I just took it.
We know that now. We did know when we set the... We discussed the...
I had to go, I... What, what is the reason? Even that, no.
Yes. No, we don't.
We'll see.
Well, we do have an official... Press report, but official title, War Broke.
It's okay, so I'll get a cotton for Thursday.
C and D. What do you guys hear?
Drink cup or water.
Best of these loyal to...
I'm getting this.
We don't have that. We've got really...
Right sauce.
You know, where you could get hospital dispensary ones. Able, I don't think you know. But you need, we have that, if you need, if you gotta do a double one.
He told her he did, apparently he didn't.
Who has to know what is on there?
No, it's made that, you know, we have to partner with this.
Yeah, the money that the club that we wanted, like the federal road down. Last year, we got to the nine thousand dollars they say. Oh, and the ticket box. To the building, yeah. I mean, they already gave us one along. That's how it's put it. So... I just need though, that... The... Right. That's just here.
Chief Smith. Uh... Uh, cheer. Yes, yeah, we would say, just like that. Like cheer. Yeah, like that. Little sign, you know?
If whatever is there at the...
Is that a kickstart to this now? Just to be like... In the spring.
I believe it's the thirty first.
Anything that I was trying to sell.
You wish you... I used to take care of it. Does it not usually happen? In fire? That's what I mean. It was one really good.
What position are you in? Like for the screening doing this?
For a course. She said, well, man, you're principal here, it's parents and mothers. You can hurry with your son.
I know, it's a back end, what's he doing?
I'm sorry, they done me.
I just see you doing like a church. My dad, you, and there. So where's he looking at?
All right, we're gonna call the meetings after order. So I have two items to share. First is, in our analysis, that stage, so to speak, we realized that we had a noticing error for the public hearing. So in fact, we cannot hold a public hearing tonight, and we'll have to recenter that. That's A. B is that the superintendent does have something to attend to these questions that will help us as we think about the public hearing.
Correct. So the math on the second page, so I go over it several times, was incorrect. The transfer to, I'm sorry, the general fund total that is going to be expended is actually less than the revenues we are bringing in by about sixty-six thousand dollars. So while fund balance will be used to offset the amount being transferred into the public safety fund, because we always use those dollars first, the anticipated expenditure, which the transfer out, which is the last line, this is operating transfers out, is the budgeted number, but because the public safety fund will realize savings, we will use that one first. So what I'm indicating is that that number is not likely to be transferred out of the general fund. But the number at the bottom of the page is also incorrect. So I will, I corrected them, and then I put them in the recycling, so I will send the corrected resolution out prior to our next meeting.
Well, now that we have some time, could we build in some of those other things we just talked about?
Yes, we could. Yes, we know of all of the items that we discussed.
Great, thank you for putting that up, Karen. So if you came to speak about the budget, you are welcome to do so in the... Probably two weeks, but also today. Give me a public comment, and certainly you can still sort of affect what might happen with the budget here, since the superintendent's gonna make some changes. But I am proposing, since we did not meet the public hearing posting timeline, that we skip that piece of the agenda. Is that okay with folks? You know what we need to do differently for whatever we set that? No, I don't think we can do anything. Would it be appropriate for us to use this time to talk about when we would set the new public hearing?
Pretty good.
Pretty good. What are y'all thinking? Should we do our next meeting? Obviously, we're gonna have a bit of a turnover here, but it doesn't look like there's any way around that. December second? Thank you. Does that work for folks? We still embed it with the meeting, so we're not talking about earlier meetings. Any other tensions that everyone's able to join us?
Yeah.
Just back, you can shout at us from the stand. Regular meeting. Six, yeah.
So all these items, all these options, all these items, A, are... We need them.
With our subparts, would be appropriate for the... So we are now...
Adam's not here, efficient, of course. This is the first second, we'll do the... If you have questions or comments about the budget before then, please reach out to board members or staff. Anything else going on to that, Karen?
Yeah, thank you for your allowing me to go correct the previous mistake, so thank you.
All right, that takes us then to item fourteen, new business. Items for introduction discussion, we have none. Items for action, December holiday office closures. Back to you, superintendent.
Thank you. In the recommendation, we noticed today as well that the, there's a word that needs to be changed. We are asking the township board to close the township offices, police and fire administrative offices in the senior center, Monday, December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, and Monday, December thirtieth, twenty-trump, four. And instead of requiring, we prefer we're allowing employees to use paid time off in addition to the federal holidays of December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and then December thirty-first, and January first, twenty-twenty-five. Employees would not be required to use pay time off, sick or vacation. They could if they so chose to be paid, they would have to use their time. They would not be required to, they would make that choice for themselves.
But they would not work.
Correct. The offices would be closed, and they would not work. Well, they're already closed, anyway.
So probably say that looks like unpaid time off, then? Is that what you're saying? And does the time off here reset in January? What is, is that...
It does. Employees are allowed to carry forty hours of vacation time over if they have that available, and they choose to carry it. And then any paid time off up to a certain level is also carried forward into the year.
So through my year, but who, just years there?
Correct, and that's usually what employees do.
Do you think that would, is there anybody that would be put out by this? Someone who may not have time off?
I don't...
But would we give them the option?
No, I don't work, so I honestly believe employees prefer to, would prefer to spend more their families, other times to make a difference, but this is one of those qualities where they would prefer to allocate.
And this is the same thing with my...
Correct, or independence days. Correct, but when it falls weird, that they would work one day and then be off several days, it tends to be their preference.
All right, folks, hard to receive.
I'll make the motion to close the township office through police, fire administration offices, senior center on Monday, December twenty-third, Monday, December thirtieth, allowing employees to use either paid time off in addition to the federal holidays of December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and December thirty-first, and January first.
The motion, is there a second? There's a second, I was already coming.
Yes. We're gonna have to have somebody on call for the DPW.
We, that is already, that's already in place, there's a small schedule in place. Yeah, they will, DPW will always be here to keep, so how is it a priority to visit our police and fire?
Yeah.
As well as any other employees that have to come in.
I thought you were the on-call.
I'm not on-call for you. I don't call, I don't work.
Keep me happy to shovel. Okay, well, not every year. All right, I'll leave, I'll show you a second. Is there other questions, concerns, thoughts? Got a voice call? Well, we'll take a voice call then. All those in favor of the motion to close during these days in the holiday season, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Enjoy time off to our staff friends. That brings us to superintendent's report.
Thank you. As I emailed last week to both the board and the police department in looking at how to help the police department move forward after Chief Gary Smith's retirement at the end of this month, I have decided to utilize the command structure and have Lieutenant Hartigan lead the program forward until the chief is hired full-time. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to discuss those with you. Yes, please.
Have you set a time for... To deadline for applications?
We have not. We have put a posting together and are looking at the different places that we could post that, the chief's association and any additional associations such as, or organizations such as Impulse, and will be putting that out. But no, we have not determined a time for that yet. That would be the last step that we'll complete prior to closing now.
And may see, you okay to hook those for us?
Okay, thank you.
So the structure would sit in the current way? You're not making anybody an interim, or there would be no chief? Will we have a structure in place to deal with that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Questions about that? Any else?
Yes, in addition, there is a young man that will be starting with us next week, and he will begin on Monday, the twenty-fifth, as our new recreation coordinator. We hope to have him come to our meetings, that he can be introduced to all of you, but he will be the new recreation coordinator and working with the farmers market, the senior center, as well as recreation programming. He comes to us with a lot of great experience in creating programs and, as well as senior center experience. Farmers market will be somewhat good to him, but I think he'll be despite his, he's done a lot for himself in his career, and I think he will be a great addition to our staff.
And what's his name?
James Seaton.
Is he on?
I think so. No, he's, no, he does not. He is in the, in the area, but not in that. In addition, I wanted to remind everyone that the township offices, police and fire administration will be closed for Thanksgiving of November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, for Thanksgiving. And if anybody needs anything, we'll be open before and after that. And of course, I believe the treasurer reassessed that, but tax bills will be going on first. So lots of people will, will be here and have already been here asking survey their taxes. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for this superintendent? Are there any other positions open right now?
Uh, I mean, I, I guess I'll back up a little bit and say there's a police officer position, I believe, that they've been interviewing for, and then of course, the chief position.
That's caught my attention on our last meeting currently.
Somebody's asked if we were gonna break. We, we have, is having problems with a switch in the technology closet. That is going to be replaced as part of a, another project, so that will be done very soon.
Well, it's streaming early.
We should have done, it may be dropping intermittently, and it's a problem that we've been aware of, I think at the last meeting, and it's a switch. Because there are not enough IP addresses of the township, sometimes you get booted off of an IP address, so it's dropping us.
Okay.
Streaming.
But we're recording.
Yeah, correct, we are recording. You can see the meeting on YouTube. It is not streaming. It's been a minute, and I know I'm often, we were aware of that, but the fix is coming soon.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for this superintendent? All right, that brings us then to public statement two. This is an opportunity for the public in the meeting in the room to speak to the board about any topic you see fit, for up to three minutes. If you could step up to the lecture and introduce yourself, and then we'll start your timer.
Well, tonight might be my lucky night. The budget is being postponed, the decision, so that's fantastic. I'm here, Judy Gardini, I'm here representing the senior services advisory board tonight. And we would like to request that, I sent you all an email about this, that the township board finance fund parking study for the space around the senior center. As you know, we have the best senior center in the region. I mean, there's no doubt about it, hands down, very the best in the region. We continue to grow, I would say we're probably serving an average of three hundred meals a week, and our to-go meal program is quite robust, but we really could use additional space within the senior center. The senior services advisory board has been diligent this year in providing you with cost estimates, cost estimates for an expansion of the senior center, in addition to the senior center, where the porch is. And every time we turn something like this in, we hear in the background, hmm, well, there's not enough space for more parking there, how could we put an expansion on the building? And rather than go through all the trouble again of looking for great money to put an expansion on there, or put an addition on there, I think the first question that we need to have answered, and you would fund that, would be, is there place within the parking available for additional parking? Could we build out somewhere to have additional parking available for the senior center? But we really feel that the space available needs to be evaluated, and we need to determine the cost for adding additional space, and how many additional spaces that we could bring to the senior center for parking. The senior center advisory board's willing to research grants available for expansion, addition, or even if it's determined that there's not any space there for additional parking. And we realize that the population of our township, the senior population, is now twenty-six percent of our township, the growth potential for the senior center is quite real, perhaps we should be looking for money for a new senior center. But without us answering the question about whether or not there is available space there for parking, additional parking, it's kind of what wakes up our time and effort. So we're requesting that within the budget of twenty-twenty-five, you fund a parking space availability study for the senior center. In addition to that, the senior services advisory board is quite concerned that the proposed budget closes the senior center on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Judy, your time is out.
But you asked for more time?
I'm sorry.
Really?
We offer three minutes, I think we have to treat everybody the same. Should you have other comments, you could email them or send them to us.
Can I speak now with a new timer on your, a new hat?
No.
I can sit down and come back to the board.
No, I'm sorry, that's creative, but no.
No, but can I not speak as president of the department on a different topic?
No, it's three minutes per person, I'm sorry.
That's disrespectful.
Is there another person that would like to speak to the board?
Thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak. This is the last board meeting for Chief Gary Smith.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to say a few words about him. Chief Smith has served in law enforcement for over 30 years. He spent the majority serving the community of that township. His community, when he grew up and went to school here. He's held nearly every position within the department with cadet, officer, field training officer, detective, detective sergeant, lieutenant, and family chief. That's quite the accomplishment and career. During that career, he has been involved in any impactful cases, some heartbreaking, some joyful. But during that time, he has made a difference in our community and his community. To me, he has been a mentor and a friend. But this is not the end. This is your new beginning. And I'm excited to see what new adventures we have in store. So congratulations, Chief Gary Smith, on your retirement.
Other opposeds? Want to share? Any thoughts? All right, very good. We'll close public comment and move to board's other comments. Sherry, do you want to go first today?
Okay, I'll finish with Judy, I think, wish to say, and that is, being involved with people there. You see our numbers? Tuesday and Thursday is a really important social day. We're paying for air, being a full-time person to be there. I really think we need to keep open on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I see how important it is there. I do go there. Um, I wish you all would come more often. I think you would agree. And I believe that's about what she would have wanted to say. And I certainly believe we should, if we can possibly afford it, to stay open for our seniors. It's a great place for them to be. That's it. Good job.
Jack? Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about Chief Smith. So, yeah, a long time. Like, when you were as tall as this table, watching him cars in the dad's garage. And I got you back here by making a couple promises that nobody here on the board knows of that I don't think they know of. In Coburn Township, I promised you you could be a detective. I promised you I'd give you a car. And I didn't have either of those things in my budget when I promised them to you. Somehow we figured out a way to make that happen, but I can tell you that as well as you've done in all the different aspects of being on the department, the detective position was the crumbly crown. We used to take a lot of bets. Oh, he'll never, he won't break this one. He'll never get a confession on this one. I lost so much money from that. So, congratulations. I hope you, I know you've got a lot of talents and skills that aren't seen any that I have for sure. So I'm sure you'll land on your feet just fine.
Thanks, Jack.
As Karen had said, yes, tax bills will be going out around December 1st. You cannot make your tax payments until December 1st, whether you have your bill or not. And then, congratulations to Gary.
Good.
Good.
Thanks. I've got a couple of items here. Our deputy superintendent has designed a new appointment application for reappointment. One of the things that we felt was a barrier to some of our current committee members being reappointed was the rigmarole that they had to fill out a completely new application and go through the process like we didn't know who they were. So she has designed a new reappointment application that those who have already been appointed will use, which is much less information, much less of a lift, but it does indicate they want to be reappointed. So I asked her to start using that with the new folks who will be reappointed for starting January 1 of our committees. If you'd like a copy of that, we can get you one. So I'm excited about that sort of streamlining of the system. Huge thanks to Gary for all of your hard work, your leadership. When we made you an interim chief, about five hot minutes later, the world exploded. Lots of things happened and that was where you proved to me that you deserved the full-time title. And that's why we gave it to you earlier, because you've stepped up to the plate and kept Bath residents safe, and I would argue regional folks safe as well. So I really appreciate all you've done for us and we will miss you and we will have a legacy here.
Thank you.
Also, thanks to Jack, speaking of legacies.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry you lost the election. I'm so happy to see you today. Thanks for all you've done for us as well. As a staff member, a leader, a board member, a supervisor, and I hope your wife doesn't think we're done with you yet.
I appreciate those comments and I'd like to just say thanks for the opportunity to serve with whichever one of you. You know, it's just been a real, a real great opportunity for me. And if something comes along that I think the timing's right on, I'll probably be cussing you about it.
Good. I would personally say that having come into this position in the manner in which I came in, not having a supervisor to sort of guide and let me know how this is supposed to work, it was helpful to have you back on the board to give me the inside scoop. So I appreciate that personally. And congratulations to Ray Caffey, who won the election. He will be our new trustee starting on Wednesday. Excited, Ray's been on our GRAT committee, he's been on our planning commission, he's been on Park Lake Advisory Board, he's been friends of Park Lake. He too is sort of an institution around here. I talked to him last week and he's excited to get started as well. And then finally, Happy Thanksgiving for everyone. I wore my pie lattice shirt today because I'm most looking forward to pie next week. Hopefully you are as well, but have a good holiday if you celebrate Thanksgiving and if you don't, have a good day off work and school. That's a pretty.
I'd like to echo what Ryan had said. Congratulations, Gary, on your retirement. Thanks, Jack, for, you know, coming back and sitting on the board. Congratulations to Ray. I can give you a little bit of numbers on elections if you guys want to hear it. Okay, so here are the township's five precincts. We had about 3,100 voters come in. Early voting, we had 1,001 voters voted in U. A. Township on early voting. Abusive voter ballots, we had 3,300. So we had a total of about 7,400 voters that actually participated in this election, which is, I think, our composition, I think, so.
It's gotta be around 74%. I think it was about 5,000.
I think it was like 76%. 76%. That's high. And we had a record number of students come and register vote in a dress on a day off. It was interesting, it was fun. We made it through, so.
Well, you know, this election for the township board that drove everybody out. You should all feel very good about that. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
Jack, it's been great. It's been a pleasure sleeping with you. Being supervisor, being trustee with us. She was always available to talk to me when I had questions. And it's just been a real pleasure. And then there was a little boy that used to walk around Park Lake. And then he turned out to be our chief. And I'll tell you, watching him grow up from little kids to very beneficial people in the township. I sure appreciate you. Thank you.
Kate, my favorite speaker?
Hi, I just wanted to thank all of the staff who pulled off the election with record numbers and handled it smoothly here. And all the people who voted, really appreciate that. Thanks to the people who came out to vote, to help have their voice heard in our community. I wanted to also thank Jack for his service and for not giving me a younger vote of, oh, I'm a spy. Uncertain as to whether I would run, but I think because of your guidance, I'm, I think, maybe you guys all worked. We've all worked together with the S. G. R. I. It's been a really positive experience for me. And I hope we can all continue to keep working forward. And of course, thanks to Chief Smith. Congratulations. It sounds like there are some big tubes to fill moving forward. And I just wanted, as a side note, to share from the planning commission that intern Allison put together a really nice demographics presentation that was shared with us at our meeting last week. And I think, and the other intern, Kate, who's maybe gotten a new title. But I don't remember. And he did one back in March. And the information that they both shared, I thought was really valuable and interesting. And I felt that most of the people in that township are not aware of the actual demographics of that township. They would be really surprised by that information. But I just wanted to make the suggestion that maybe those are things that we could share through our social media presence, that did you know, fun fact type topic or whatever. I thought it'd be really interesting and I would imagine that the other people who follow us that way would as well. And it might answer some questions that people have or change some of the assumptions that they make about our community and its demographics. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you. I look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. All those in the favor, someone's saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? You stand adjourned. Any opposeds?